All right, go for it.
This session, the Cal County Council is in session right now from recess. So this session of Thursday, July 10th, budget presentations is now in order. And first up today, we have, on my notes, Soil and Water. Welcome. Oh, good.
Now, I hope those two in the back takes hints, you know? They just come in and sit down. They don't help without one. No, it just makes us in a happier mood.
It's a tradition. Good morning.
That complete budget operation.
Well, thank you for meeting with us today. I'd like to introduce one of our board supervisors who joined me today. If you haven't met, this is Jeff Conrad, and he's served with Soil and Water for over 20 years. And he's been an excellent leader and promoter of conservation, and we're lucky to have him on our team. So I hope you all received the letter I emailed earlier, which included an overview of our work, our 2026 budget requests, and the accompanying leveraging summary that outlines the return on investment that the county sees through our programs. And anyone unfamiliar with Soil and Water, we serve as the local hub for connecting land users to direct sources of education, financial and technical assistance for applying conservation practices, and best management technologies on the land to address soil and water concerns. And really, the budget, I didn't touch Personnel Services this year, like you guys said. Leave that at zero. And then we just had telecommunications and operating expenses. So operating expenses, we did increase to 4%. And then telecommunications, we did increase that to what it actually reflects, what we would need. In the past, we've always just used our operating expenses to cover the remaining. So this year, we took that out and just made it what it actually is. And then thanks to our ongoing partnership with USDA and NRCS, our office rent and utilities remain covered, which continues to ease our operating expenses. And then we also are primarily funded through county and state appropriations, and we also actively seek public and private grants to support our educational efforts and the implementation of conservation practices, which allows us to stretch every county dollar that much further. And then the leveraging sheet that was included in the email, we achieve a return of 14.76 based on our 2024 numbers. And then we continue to do a lot of conservation practices and community outreach. Some of the things we've already done this year include rain barrel workshops, pollinator workshop, and we're doing the big county farm demonstration plots. We do a lot of youth education throughout the year. Our Agronomy Field Day, which I passed a flyer out, is coming up, July 22nd, for anyone who can make it. And then we also had a very successful tree and native plant sale. And we offer our district cost share program, which has been a very popular program for financial assistance for conservation practices. So that gets utilized a lot for things such as composting, barrels, garden soil testing, invasive tree removal and replacement, rain barrels, rain gardens. And then a big one that we fund is septic system replacements, too. So on behalf of the staff and board, we really appreciate your support. So thank you. Any questions? Happy to answer.
You're gonna have to come back. What addition here?
No, because we put it in the budget for the telecommunications. We increased that.
For this year, it looks like you have.
No, not for this year. This year, we're okay. Yeah, we won't have to come back this year, but we did increase it, so we went for next year.
Anybody else have any questions for Nellie? Thank you.
Thanks.
And Jeff wants to make sure he gets what's left. They do have a board meeting, so they have to keep the board members happy.
Thank you. I can't help you there. Tyler?
Ready. Okay, Tyler Laney from the surveyor's office. For our budget, we tried to do the requested 0% increase. So we made very few changes. Our only changes that were made from the approved budget from 2025 were for our education and training. We increased that by $400. And we decreased our office equipment budget by $500. It was our furniture and fixtures. So we just received a new table and office chairs for our meeting room last year, as well as a couple new chairs for our computers. So we have a couple chairs we need to replace, but I think we should be able to fit that inside of that. So we actually decreased from our approved budget of last year by a small amount of $126, I think it was. $120, so we decreased that. Were we discussing the Form 144 over here for the employee wages? Are we just? That's your season? Okay, all right. So on the official request, we put the 0%, like was requested. On the 144, we did a 4% increase for the employee wages, just to keep up with inflation and provide for them. The only exception was to for our office administrator and manager requested a 6% increase for her.
You say that was for your office manager?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. I think we get a pretty good bargain on her right now. So she's a pretty capable Swiss Army knife that does a lot, has a master's degree, and is pretty good. So. Sure. Sure. Okay. Yep. Yep, wasn't really sure what that looked like, so just put that in there. Not all the way yet, but we're making progress. That's right. Mm-hmm. Yep, of course. Anything else? That was pretty easy and quick, right? That may be your quickest one. Have already been beat? No, no, we don't have anything in our five-year plan right now. We have two new trucks for our field inspectors, so those are still doing great. We have one older model truck that we can use. So we have three vehicles utilized. We still have our Polaris Ranger around the field. So no major equipment expenses that we're anticipating.
Any other questions for Tyler?
Since we're done budget, you get that fixed up there to Hamilton?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
The water's not running across the field?
Blake and Bill, they wanted me to tell you when I got here that it's all fixed for you. So it's working now.
He does get around. I have to give him credit. I may give him a hard time, but I.
You don't give me credit very often, Bill, so.
We're on a public meeting. I will give you credit.
And you probably shouldn't say on a public meeting, "He gets around."
Yeah, especially if his wife's watching.
Easy.
Are there any other comments other than from Bill Van Wyk? So thank you, Tyler.
Thank you, guys, very much. Have a good day.
Okay, we're running a little ahead of schedule. Dana, you've had your chance at the microphone. You're not coming back up. We're early. Joni, you want to go early or...? Okay.
Good morning. I know council asked us to make cuts where we could. I tried my best to do that. But there were a couple accounts I had to increase, first off being the postage account. As you know, postage continues to go up. We have a lot of tax bills we send out, delinquent notices, courtesy letters, that kind of thing. So I did have to increase there. In this year, earlier this year, we purchased a remote capture machine. That is a machine that we scan all the checks that we take. And we process between 15,000 to 20,000 checks a year. So we purchased a new machine that allows us to send those to the bank electronically. We previously were sending them electronically, but a much smaller machine. This new one processes them much faster and more efficiently. And it also captures the front and back of the check and the property tax coupon. We can scan them both through together, and it imports that file right into Laos so we can see it with the property tax receipt. So if you pay your property tax bill, come in, we can pull that up, show you your check you wrote, the coupon you gave us. So it's really nice. But along with that new machine came a new maintenance contract. So I did have to increase what we had in the maintenance contract account. I also added an account for a replacement employee. I have one employee, Sandy, who will be retiring sometime early next year. So I will need to replace her, and there'll probably be an overlap during that time. So I did put in, I estimated about 12 weeks of overlap. So there is a new item for that. I will be coming in next month to see you for, to try to get a replacement employee hired yet this year to start that training. It's not something that I can just wait till Sandy's done and then bring someone in. Along with that, I had a slight increase in the training, because whatever new employee I hire, I would like to send to the NACO Leadership Academy course that I took. I think that's super beneficial for everyone, but I would like to do that. So I did increase the training account slightly. I had several accounts that I decreased to make up for the ones that I was increasing, such as other service fees, equipment, furniture and fixtures. So overall, I was able to reduce my budget slightly from last year. Lastly, I did ask for a small increase in wages for my staff. It's a common misconception that our office is only busy twice a year. Not true at all. I would invite all of you to visit our office and see what we do. I can give you a quick rundown of some of the main tasks that we do aside from collecting property taxes, such as tax sale, managing delinquent government employees for the government entities within our county, demands, judgments, bankruptcy, TRACs, alcohol permits, mobile home title transfers, moving permits. We receive the money for other departments and then manage more than a dozen bank accounts, investments, just to name some of our duties. The treasurer's office does all of that with a staff, a small staff of four people. I, like all of you, want us to be the best stewards of county money that we can be, but I don't want to sacrifice our staff. Staff is one of the greatest assets of the county, and we need to offer competitive wages to keep our experienced staff here to serve the taxpayers.
I haven't figured it. Did you request increases on the Form 144?
Yes.
Was it a set?
A 4%.
Okay. Thank you.
And I want to make a comment, which, as Tyler's gone, I can say good things. But Tyler and her came together and saved the county quite a bit of money when she was allowed to send their deal out on the Cedar Creek deal. We sent it through our tax deals. That was a two, two letters being soiled that we were having a hearing on the Cedar Lake to raise the rate. I appreciate you doing that for them. That saved the county quite a bit of money.
Right. We did that last year with Lita's office. They sent out, it's called a buck slip. It's just an informational slip in the tax bill as a way to save money. And then this year, we were able to do that with the surveyor's office, so that it ended up costing maybe $700, I think, to send notification out to everybody who was affected by that, by including it with the tax bill. And they were able to specifically, our vendor could insert that buck slip only in the people that were affected, which was nice.
Well, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good job.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Joni? Anything else?
No, that's all I had.
Thank you.
Thank you.
While we're on a break, I did text or leave a message for Jennifer yesterday about the wheel tax, and the wheel tax is stackable. The, we can, the county would pass one, the city of Auburn could pass one, and also Garrett. I don't believe that Butler, Butler and Waterloo and St. Joe don't meet the population threshold for that. But what, she believes that what Ben was thinking, that they weren't stackable. There was an amendment to the bill in legislature that passed one house but did not pass the other that would have unstacked it. But, so it is stackable. So if we would, if we were to put one on, Auburn and Garrett could also put one on top of that. But that's, that's on them. What I, I did send her an email that I do not have an answer on yet that had some other questions, like if the county were to pass the tax. If, we know that if we pass the tax, we would share the money with the different cities and towns. If Auburn and Garrett would pass the tax also on top, would the money from the county that would go to cities and towns still go to them? Or would it not because they passed their own? I don't know. That may. No, it doesn't. Nothing's going to decrease. That much I can say. But if nobody, but the county passes it, then a percentage goes to Auburn, Garrett, Butler, St. Joe, Corona, Ashley. Even Hamilton would get a piece because they've got part of the, part of the county. But if this, if those two cities were to pass the tax, would we still have to give them their share from the county portion? I believe we would, because they would still be paying. The residents of the town would still be paying that county portion. So I would, I don't know. It's all, it all needs to be addressed, but we're getting as much information about this as we can. And the, if you haven't seen it, I've sat through a number of presentations, but LTAP did an online webinar that apparently has been recorded, and it is viewable on, on, yes. The, online, you can view it online. Where do we, where do we view our stuff? Name of it.
On YouTube?
Oh, YouTube. That's it. YouTube. That's what I want. YouTube. You can, you can watch it on YouTube. That's my question. Do they count, do they get, does it count that they qualify if the county passes it? Or do they have to pass it individually? So they may be truly forced into passing their own if they can. Okay, so. So it's very likely, if the county were not to pass it, that they could pass their own anyway so that they could qualify.
But 100%, just for clarity, 100% of what a city would collect stays within.
Within the city, yes, within the city.
Yeah, Fort Wayne does it. Because I was talking to those guys, and they said, "Yeah, we've paid two, twice as much."
Yeah. Well, it's all, you know, it's all things that we need to make a decision on at some point, so. Who knows? We might have to work.
We're trying.
I know you are. What about, what about, what about Patrick Grant down there?
We're trying. He specifically said he couldn't come before 3:00, but we're gonna have the.
Bob is sick, apparently.
Office gals try and call him. I just handed mine to Dana.
You're about to get another one. Can you file stamp that before you leave the room? They have the technology.
Do you want me to go ahead and talk?
Pardon? Sure.
There's not, there's not really much of anything. The majority of all my funds that you see in my big packet. Okay, well anyways, when you get the packet, you're gonna see the majority of the funds are just funds that I'm in charge of, such as the Redevelopment Commission, the dark transit, because it gets passed through to us. Bunch of just miscellaneous things that I just have to deal with. My main general fund budget, it didn't really change. The only thing, the only major thing that changed was I will only need one replacement employee instead of two, so I decreased that by half because I already had one retire, and it's, that position's replaced. And then I also was paying for half of one of my deputies out of my plat book fund. And that is getting low enough that I won't be able to fund that position half out of there anymore. So I moved that to the general fund. Other than that, there's really not many changes. I did a few. Postage I increased, and I increased some other service fees for some other contracts that I have, whether it's online deductions, things like that. I also have in the council budget, which I had that in for this year also. If you remember, we separated council out of the commissioners. I have had in there, and I remain in there. I'm wanting to go with Laos for timekeeping system across the entire county. I'm not happy with Write Stuff. That is at two of our departments. It's still a very frustrating situation. So that could possibly be getting done, implemented this year. It's my hope with Laos. So we might not need it once we get to next year, but it's in there just in case. Right now, two of our departments only are using Write Stuff software.
Which is something that Cosco uses it for, I believe, their entire county. And we tried to get it here and just, Susan, I mean, it was frustrating at first at Community Corrections, and then we put it out at.
Central.
Central.
Central wasn't as bad, but we still have issues at Community Corrections.
Since it has, it's something that has to feed into Laos anyway. If Laos would do it, right, straight up, we wouldn't have to have a separate vendor to do it.
They do now. So Laos has it. They have a, I forget at the moment the name of it. They have a little third-party thing that, that will talk right to Laos for us. So it'd be so much nicer. So that is what I am wanting to go with. The other thing that I've been working on, and Jody's been doing most of the talking because I'm too frustrated with them to be very nice. But I've been working for, what, three years now? Trying to get all of our ordinances and minutes and everything scanned so that the public can easily search online. They could like type in speed limit, and every single ordinance that has a speed limit, and it would come up. It's been very trying. I'm very, very frustrated. But it, it's coming. It's working. They have a lot of our stuff scanned. It's just not working how it should be. I have many counties that use it and love it, and so that's why I'm so frustrated, because we're not the first county that they've ever seen a resolution or ordinance. And yeah, it's not cool. So it's coming. That, not the payroll part of it. I have a different vendor that will be coming. I tried very hard to get this already instituted, but I had some pushback from another department. And right now, I can't think of the name of my, my other.
YouTube.
Not YouTube. But it is a, it is a, it is a vendor that will do all that. They will do all the onboarding. All of it will be electronic, no paper. It will feed directly to us. All the employee questions will go directly to them, not to HR. And God, why can't I think of the name? I'll think of it. But that, that is coming, because I was very adamant of getting it. But like I said, I had some pushback. It's coming. Yes. 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 I'm so tired of paper, but yet we still have to have this. Yeah. But yes, that, I have that coming as well, so.
It was not.
Yeah, I don't believe it.
Yeah.
Something about council budget, that's not in this packet.
It probably didn't get printed. It's a different location, 61.
Well, I know that you can only hope that this searchable ordinances and stuff, that that gets done. And I, I asked her about that on a regular basis, and she's very frustrated with the, the, the salesperson that she's working with from that group is very good and has actually taken over from the people that were supposed to implement it, because nobody can figure out why is it not working for us when it's working for everybody else? So Susan's blood pressure goes up frequently over that whole issue.
Sure does, doesn't it, Jody?
Because that's something that.
Jody gets the brunt of my frustration on that one.
We wanted that for six or seven years, and. Why not? What's the, what's the difference here that it doesn't, you know? And it's whatever they did, however they put it in, because all they did was provide all the information. Because all they did was provide all the information. Here it all is, put it in and make it work.
No, they scanned it all. They, they literally have trucks full of my stuff. And they scanned it all in.
See, that's the problem. The, it's not here, it's there.
Okay, okay.
Not to mention, they, we've had to redo three hard drives.
Thank you.
Of external hard drives of data because they've lost it twice. Yeah. You can imagine why my salesperson has taken over, because he wants me to be happy and he knows I'm not. Yeah, and he knows I'm not quiet, so.
What an announcement. Are we ready? Are you done?
Alyssa, if you can come in. Can we go refer back to you?
I'm done. I'm real, no, I'm seriously done with my.
Does anybody else have any questions for Susan?
So we can, we got two people.
I'm seriously done, yeah.
Thank you, Susan. That's well done.
Thank you, Susan. Chris.
We all know your.
Thank you very much, Susan. Chris, we're gonna go with you since you came in early, so you're up. You're up.
Now?
Yes, sir.
We can make him wait.
We're ahead of schedule.
I'm just messing.
I don't know yet. He'll be late.
I wanna see.
Oh yeah, it's tremendous. Almost.
Thank you.
Um, I sang Happy Birthday this morning.
To who?
Um, Colin from Orange Theory.
Uh, oh, of course. What, at three o'clock in the morning?
It was 6:00 AM, but yeah.
At his gym.
I wake up at 4:30 every day. Can't, can't be, can't be sleeping in till whenever. Anyway, hi.
And I was the only one that got up at 4:30 in the morning.
Oh, no worries, no worries. Thanks for hearing all these and hearing from us. We appreciate it. The original budget from just county general for my department actually took a decrease of about $60,000. That's really just about the comprehensive plan budget that we requested last year. Council approved $100,000 for that for this year. The total amount for the contract came to about 130. So that would be split over the course of two years. So what I'm hoping we can do this year is just request the $30,000 that I'll need to pay out the budget. And then I'll encumber, I'll come for an encumbrance because we already have the contract. And I think that's what we need to be compliant. I'll just encumber the rest of whatever we don't use this year and then add it to the 30,000 next year so that I'm not requesting, I'm not, I don't need the additional $100,000 that we originally thought we might need. So that, from the county general. One thing that we are requesting additional for is through the Cume Cap Fund, is for the Eagleview LiDAR data. We have historically, that is contours on the ground. So they do a flyover, use sonar or whatever they use, and are able to do contours, tops of buildings, and trees, that sort of thing, that the surveyor's office uses often for their drainage purposes. Various surveyors and engineers use our contours from our beacon site or from our G I S department and use those for their engineering purposes.
Cities and towns use that also?
Citizens, cities and towns use it as well, yes. They really like that we have, have, over the last six years, done our aerial imagery every three years. I know that the assessor's office and, not here. And, but the, but the other various offices, Susan's transfer department uses our G I S often, very, every day. Same with the assessor's office, so.
Recorder does too, I think.
Recorder does too, yeah. They probably all do. And the general public uses our beacon site very often. So it's important that our aerial imagery is up to date. People often come in and even, even now that we are at the tail end of our three years, they're like, well, my property doesn't look like that now. I don't have the pool anymore. I'm like, well, we didn't take the pictures yesterday. So, anyway, Eagleview has.
Could you imagine? People would freak out if there was somebody up there every single day taking pictures.
They were when the, remember when the drones were flying around, that whole, that whole controversy? Yeah. Eagleview has graciously, I think, not increased the fees for their flyovers, so the aerial or the oblique imagery, since 2020. And I don't have a, I'm requesting the funds. If I receive the funds, we will then proceed with a contract for them for 2026, which will last for six years, and I can't do that math, 2031. So it would last through 2031. So council would be needing to make sure that, that the $56,407 is in our budget every year for the next six years if we go through with a contract with Eagleview to do their imagery. The LiDAR, the contour data is done every three years and that cannot be split up into a payment like the aerial imagery is. So that's a one-time cost of $113,222. So as you can see, that's what I've requested additional in the Cume Cap to continue with our aerial imagery. I should back up a little bit. Our contract is over with Eagleview this year. So we made our final payment this year. So that contract is over. If we, if you decide not to go through with that, the state does do aerial imagery as most things with the state. The funds get cut, and so you never know when we're gonna get that. We were on a flight for 2026. It's already been pushed to 2027. I'm assuming it'll get pushed again. And so you just, they're, the state aerial imagery is just not reliable. So this is just a more reliable way to do it through a private company, obviously. One thing that we did last year with our building department fees and our plan commission fees. Building department fees have never been updated since 1989, or if they were, they were, they were sporadic. In 2023, we had our permit fees totaling, and this is permit fees of both building department and plan commission fees, totaling about $65,000. We doubled, some tripled those fees. And we're now up to collecting about $181,000, which helps, and that goes all to the county general. So that helps pay for, I think, the services and fees that they are getting. I think I've mentioned this before, that, that I believe a lot of maybe the building department side and some of the plan commission side should be a user fee-based system, that if, if you're coming in and giving a building permit, you should be able to pay through that permit fee for your services. There are three or four or five inspections, reviewing of the plans, that sort of thing. And I think that this helps do that. We're not up to that full capacity yet, but I think it helps. We looked at through the, through the county commissioners. So the county commissioners are who sets those budgets, or sorry, who sets those fees. And then the plan commission sets the fees for the rest. But, so the county commissioners in 2024 is when we changed those fees. Felt as though our fees were low compared to our surrounding counties. And it has not halt, halted any construction at all because of those fees. So that's kind of a general explanation. What I passed out to you, I do this every year. I have for nine years, requested funds for office. And I think I've sent pictures about, I think, every year for the last two or three. You know, our office is an old office. Historically, I've heard that it was an old chicken coop or chicken.
There was a, there, there was an egg business.
Egg business.
Although I believe that's where the annex building sits.
Oh, okay.
The hatchery was.
Ours might have been like just the office space, and I don't know.
Yours is probably where the clock tavern was.
Okay. I wish that was there still. But anyway, as you can see, especially over the last few years, the rusting out of the railing, which then crumbles the concrete of the landing, crumbles the concrete of the, of the ramp, or accessible ramp, on page five, inside the vestibule, just, stuff needs updated. I know that the county commissioners have tried to work in finding solutions for this. I just don't know what that solution looks like. So I just want you guys to see what this, what the actual office space looks like. We are oftentimes commented on by builders that say, this is your office? People come in, they're like, this is where you, this is a building department office? You know, there's holes in the floor. This, this office has been used for many things over the years. It was Cruz's Law Office. It was a fitness center for a while. So there's holes in the, in the floors where people would drill up from the basement to put their electric service, right? So, so there's multiple holes in the floor. There's multiple soft spots in the floor. We don't have enough plugins just because our service can't handle it. So we run extension cords and, he's laughing because he sees it all the time, my liaison. You know, so things are just, things are just old and, and cruddy. We don't allow the public to use our restrooms because they, the, the toilets, if you see the men's toilet, it's slowly getting worse and worse, tilting. Stepping on that side, it's super, super soft. The women's bathroom on page 20, assuming there's a leak there, you step on that floor and it's spongy and I'm assuming it's brown liquid, not from excrement, but from the floor itself. Like you, there's like three little holes on page 20 by the toilet that seeps up with brown liquid. And then, thank God, the hallway or the, the weight room is now out of there. That's something that was needed for a long time. That floor, you walk through there and there are multiple, multiple soft spots in that floor. Ceiling tiles are missing. There's, you know, when the, when the roof leaks, it happens every winter. Water spots, the roof, the, the tiles. Again, I ask for it every year and I appreciate what you guys give us in our department to make us work. We're appreciative of everything of that. And, and, you know, making sure we're on a schedule for new aerial imagery and that sort of thing is important for the work that we do, not just my department, but multiple departments around, and multiple other people in the community, realtors and assessors and title companies, they all use beacon for their, for their projects. So it's important that that's, that's updated. So I appreciate that.
Chris, does the basement still flood at lower level?
No.
It was 45 years ago.
I mean, yes.
My office was, my office was there 45 years ago in that basement. It flooded every winter, spring.
Yeah, no, there's no flooding anymore.
I believe if the sump pumps quit working, it would flood.
Yeah, it was, it, it was a bad building 45 years ago when my office was in the basement.
And we do make sure that the humidifier or dehumidifier runs down there, because that's where all of our electronics, the IT stuff is. So all of our servers are in the basement. So if there would be something happen there, we could lose all of that, which would be, thank God they have it now all in the cloud, but.
Now, you, you do know that the base study that we just authorized money for and that the commissioners are conducting, your office condition was one of the primary reasons for that study to begin with.
Yeah.
To move ahead on that, so.
And that's important. And there's been, you know, we've, I've heard talks over the years of, you know, moving our office to some other location or in the annex or trying to figure out. And obviously, doing that just puts the Band-Aid over the wound, you know? It doesn't really fix, fix anything. But anyway, again, we're appreciative of everything we get as far as that goes. But I'll take any questions you do have. The only thing, I mean, we kept every, all of the, I've heard this over the course of the other department heads, the 0% and the actual budget. And then if something happens or if there's some extra funds out there, an increase for payroll is often appreciated too.
Chris, the, the one thing that's, it's noted in here, and you've been doing it now for probably close to a year, the arrangement that the county has with City of Butler.
Yeah.
Where you're doing work for Butler and then being paid extra for that work. Is, is that attracting from your county job?
No. No. And they have night meetings and things like that. I'm their B Z A hearing officer as well, and those are all at night. No, and I think Andrew and I were working well together and, you know, he, he'll call me when it's needed. But really, once that, once they get their comprehensive plan completed and once we get their extraterritorial jurisdiction area completed, I would assume that unless they want to keep me on for some zoning changes as well proposed, that will probably end this year next.
Did we just do something to allow them to use our system for permitting or something?
We're working on that as well. Right. We're working on that too. I would love for all the cities and towns, except Auburn, because they're on their own, to utilize our permitting software. It would, it would greatly help with residents from, especially coming from Butler and Ashley, to not have to drive the 15 or 20 minutes to get to Auburn to drop off a permit. A lot of them do email the permits to us and then we can just call the, call the resident and have them pay over the phone. But a lot of people just, they drive to Butler, get their permit, they're told to come to our office, so they drive the extra 20 minutes to our office and then are here for, you know, 15, 20 minutes and then, and then they are on their way. So utilizing the permitting software would mean it'd be a simple phone call for the resident to say, hey, I just got my permit from Butler. We can log in, see, oh, yeah, there it is, take their payment over the phone. It wouldn't have to be a, filling out of multiple.
You're making it convenient when you can and.
Oh, yeah.
It'll be on the, the cities then to try to work with you so that we make things more convenient for our.
And one thing, I mean, COVID wasn't wonderful, but one thing it did do is make us realize that we can do things over the phone and online a lot easier. All of our permitting can be done over the internet. A lot of people don't use the portal just because they like to come into the office. And, or they're out in the field and they're just, don't have their laptop there to, to, to fill out the permit application. But we do a lot of things over email, a lot of things over email for various permits or, or projects, which is nice.
Chris, does your building qualify for any historical preservation grants? I see you have a lot of historical wood paneling here, so.
A lot of historical wood paneling. I mean, I'm sure that there would be some. Someone would probably actually like the wood paneling. I just don't.
That's, 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 that's so savagely.
I know, I know, I know. I know. But I'm imagining someone would love it.
Does anybody have any questions for Chris? Thank you, Chris. We appreciate you coming in early.
Thank you, guys. We do appreciate the work you're doing. We really do. Thanks.
Chair would like to take a five-minute recess here, please. Can we stand in recess?
Thank you, Jason, for coming in early.
Ready? Okay. Okay, we're back in session. At this time, Alicia from the Health Department.
Good morning. Okay. So I know I gave you guys a lot of information yesterday.
So for these, just to help you out here, they're really wanting you to hit like on any big, huge changes. So if you had to increase an area by a lot, why? And not just everything.
Yep, nope. So I just want to hit on a couple of the things that we changed.
This is what they, because they.
Okay.
We have a copy.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Awesome. Thank you. So really, when we went ahead and did our budgets this year, we did a pretty good job sticking to what the council had asked us to stick to. Really only there were a couple areas that we did ask for increases. Again, those were prefaced yesterday when I was talking about the HFI budget. So again, operating supplies and our health fund, which is the 1159, is one area that we did ask for an increase. Again, we're talking about our communicable disease patients. So making sure that those individuals are continuing to receive diagnostic testing and treatment that they should be receiving regardless of their residential status here in Indiana. So we added about $4,525 to that account. It's about a 2% increase. So there was that increase. And then also a couple other ones, other service fees and postage, we just had very minimal increases there. Again, we're just cutting it really close this year, so we just needed to add a little bit additional funds going into next year just to cover our typical costs. I feel like that's really it, honestly. Like all of our budgets stayed pretty consistent into next year. When we talked about Health First yesterday, one thing I did want to mention is that if we were to receive support from the council financially to help our partners with programming and be able to continue to support them, those funds would be put, I believe, into our health fund. We obviously did not put in a budget for that because we weren't sure what that was going to look like or what you guys were going to end up deciding. So we did leave that out of the health fund. But when talking with Cheryl, she said that probably that is where those funds would end up going and we would budget everything out of there. So that's really all I have, especially since.
Alicia, when you say the health fund, are you talking about?
The 1159.
The 1059, okay.
Yep, yep. So again, you know, with everything I gave to you guys yesterday, that is a lot of my presentation today. I know that you all received information yesterday regarding the presentation that I did. So if you guys have any questions regarding the current budget or the Health First stuff, I am happy to talk about that or answer any questions now.
Excuse me. When we were talking, you, wasn't the 59, the 1059 or 11, wasn't that taken out because of the new programs and now you have to bring it back? Wasn't there several accounts dropped because of the new programs? Is that why you're going back to?
With the 11?
It wasn't, I might even misunderstood you.
No, the 1159 has always been, it was the trust funds, the 1206.
Okay.
That they no longer get the.
Yep. So we're no longer, longer receiving funds for those, those grants. Health First replaced those. So, yeah. From what I understand, we're planning on keeping it this year, but if we were needing to replace that, we do have funds in the local health department, I think it's the local health trust account, to be able to cover that cost. So that is where we would be paying for that from. So we have two vaccine storage units, two of them, well, we have three technically. So we have two refrigerators and we have one freezer unit. We just replaced our freezer this year. And then our, one of our refrigerators is going to be, needing to be replaced here in the near future.
Most of those are mandated that you have to replace them every so many years, aren't they?
Yeah, it's just, you want to make sure your equipment's good, especially when we're dealing with vaccine. It's a huge cost to be able to provide those. So if we lost a vaccine unit, we would be losing thousands of dollars in product that would again come out of our accounts, so.
Those are, those are all, those freezers and those refrigerators are all alarmed and.
Yes, so.
So that if it does drop, somebody gets notified immediately.
Yep, yes. And we, we do have, if anything were ever to show up with those or we were alarmed of anything, we do have other people within the county who'd be willing to help us potentially store vaccine if we needed to. So we are covered there. But we do need to make sure that we're keeping everything up to date in our office. Yeah.
Anybody else have any questions for Alicia? Thank you for coming in.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. I really appreciate it.
Nice job. Well, I'm done. That's my work. All morning. I'll form the liaison tour. I'm done. We're not leaving yet.
You came in a little early. We appreciate it, so we're going to do you next year. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning, Jason.
So for the emergency management, for the 1,001 general, 0% increase as instructed. I do want to highlight though that we did get the $34,067.62 for our salary reimbursement. That has continued to be a thing. We have not done the grant paperwork for this year yet. That has not been sent by the state. But if it is, then next year's $34,000 would be what we do this year. So we did get that money to the auditor's office of that $34,067 for our salary reimbursements for the general. For 1152 LEPC, again, that was a 0% increase and that's our hazmat fund. And all those monies are the state funds that come in for the industries that submit for their hazardous materials that they have on site. And then that money goes to the state and then that in turn gets redistributed to DeKalb County. And we received that of some additional funding for that for this year. On June 13th, we received $14,201.31, which is quite a bit more than we've received in years past. Normally we only receive around $700 to $7,500, so. So that's for that account and that's all hazmat training, equipment and things like that for the fire departments and emergency managements to handle hazardous, hazardous material spills that occur within DeKalb County. The 8106 emergency disaster, that's a 0% increase and that's a fund that we've had set up for as long as I know of for if we ever had a disaster that we could put money into to help us as a county get through that. So we can put monies in there to help us with supplies and equipment. 8123, the state homeland security grant, that's a grant that's just reoccurring until that money's gone. So there was 0% increase there. The 9100 state homeland security grant two was a 0% increase and that's the same, that that money's there until it's all gone. And then lastly is the 9118 District Three Hospital Coalition Grant, and that was a 0% increase because that also is a grant fund. And then once that money is expended, then that's all gone too. And then as far as the capital, that's just more informational about where we're at with the mileage for the truck. We're not asking for another vehicle for this year. We're a current mileage of around 78,500. So every year we've submitted a capital report just illustrating where we're at with mileage, mileage from year to year. We're, last year, between last year and this year, it was 12,000 miles is what we put on that truck. So I'd say we're from 12,000 to 15,000 miles a year is what we're doing with that. And that is my report, unless there's any questions.
Anybody have any questions for Jason? Thank you, Jason. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you. Everybody have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff Thomas. Good morning.
What do you have? It's in your afternoon stack.
Yeah, but it's missing out.
Which one?
Homeland Security.
What's this?
Second, to the back.
That's mine.
That's mine.
I didn't get one.
Okay.
I did not take it. You didn't put it on.
Go ahead, Sheriff.
Okay.
We're just masking.
So go over some of the changes to our budget from the previous year or from this year for our part-time hourly people, our extra duty pay. On the deputies' pay matrix and all the other staff wages, we submitted for a 5% cost of living increase. On the SRO, I'm sorry, SRO account, 11413, we did have a change on that. We had submitted originally for that account to be at $65,660. There's going to be a different person in that account coming up for next year. That person on the pay matrix has more time in service, so to pay them where they're at on the pay matrix, that one, I, we had sent to the auditor for that to be $71,012. Again, that just accounts for a different person in that account that will be going into that SRO position for this next year. Account 22210, petroleum products, basically gas for the vehicles. In 2024, we spent $163,000 for that. This year, we're expecting to spend about $143,000 and we had budgeted $112,000. So we're expecting to have to transfer about $30,000 yet this year. So all those numbers that include the transfers that we did. So for 2026, we did increase that account from $112,000 to $150,000. In order to account for that change, we were able to decrease the care of inmates account. When it comes to ammo, ammunition and flares, it's account 22220, we increased that account to $45,000. There was a cost of ammunition increase there. Plus with the establishing a SWAT team, we'll have additional training that they'll have to go through throughout the year that they'll be doing. May have to send deputies to the academy in 2026. Additional ammunition would be needed with that. Plus, we were able to get additional jail staff qualified to carry a handgun so they assist with transports from time to time. So due to some of those changes, also the cost of ammo going up, I had to increase that account. The next account I wanted to touch on was 22490, institutional and medical, quality correctional care, also known as QCC, is the jail's medical care provider. They did change the way that billing is being done, where now the county pays for inmate medications, where before that was substantially being covered by them. They did reduce their contract price in shifting that to us, so there was a little bit of an offset there. But because of those increased costs with inmate medications, we had to budget $55,800 into that account to help cover the medications. Account 32800, medical fees, where we do pay for our QCC contract, that, they did increase that contract by 4%. So you'll see that amount there, $234,870, I'm sorry, $780. Some of the decreases in our budget is officer operational supplies, it's account 22300. We had to purchase body armor this year. That won't be in the budget for next year, so was able to decrease that one. Crime control, account 33920, some new cameras that we're working on getting, establishing has some upfront costs that will incur this year, that was put into this year's budget. But going forward for next year, won't incur those costs, it'll just be maintenance fees after that. So that was able to be decreased. And as I mentioned before, the care of inmates account, 34190, we had decreased that and moved that to petroleum products. That account that we decreased care of inmates generally is used for keeping inmates in other counties. Have not incurred a lot of cost of that, so we've been able to move that money. When it comes to the CUM cap, we have the purchase of new vehicles. Those typically what we would. Those typically what we do is five vehicles, those are estimated at $49,900 for 2026. Those are always hard to predict though. And then outfitting those vehicles for patrol would be $78,442, and with one K-9 vehicle being at roughly $19,000. I think that covers.
You say $80,000 a car by the time you get it fitted?
For, that was for all of them.
Okay.
Yeah.
To fit the lights and everything, and everything be a fair. And what do you say on the car, again, I can't find it on my thing, but what do you say on the car?
I'm sorry.
Forty-nine thousand a car?
Forty-nine nine.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I think that covers substantially the, the changes we had in the budget. We have three open deputy positions. Those are the only positions we have, the, all the other positions are filled, but three road spots.
That's the most we've had for a while, isn't it?
It is, yeah.
The, the SRO position, we provide DeKalb High School, the middle school, Eastside, and Garrett.
And Garrett.
And then Auburn does McKinney-Harrison and something else.
Yeah, Auburn has, I think, one right now, and he covers Jared Watson and McKinney. And then ours cover, overlap kind of with Waterlily Mentoring and Country Meadow.
The other, the other question I have, and you've actually already answered it to me, but just so the council knows, it became a big issue in the legislature this year that the state was not paying counties quickly for maintaining inmates in our jails. And that we're owed $180,000, I believe it was, by the state. And the promise during that committee hearing was that we would get paid. Well, we didn't get paid by the end of the fiscal year for the state, so let us know when that money comes in, will you?
We will let you know.
That goes to the general fund, correct? Once, once the state, yeah, okay.
I think it's been nine months roughly. So June of last year, last time they sent money to us.
Maybe the check's in the mail.
And they did increase that amount, they.
Yeah, for ongoing, yeah, it goes up to what, $42 a day or something like that?
Roughly, yeah.
So the. And I have tried to find out, and I talked to you about this, and I've talked to a number of other people about, how do they, how do they choose who they're calling into the prison system? The jail that's the most full, that's who we'll go for first, or the most violent offender, that's who we'll go for? Or whoever my buddy runs that jail, I, you don't know.
That's the million dollar question.
Yeah.
It is. Sure. Yeah, so Quality Correctional Care is the medical care contractor that we have. They're the medical contractor for about 70 counties in Indiana, so they're relied on very heavily and overall do a really good job, and we're, we're happy with their service. So those fees include a full-time nurse that we have that's in the jail every day, Monday through Friday. And then there's a part-time nurse that comes in after hours. So our jail is not staffed 24 hours, seven days a week with medical care, or a person onsite, I should say. But they're on call, so some of those, with that contract, we can call at any time and talk with the nurse. They're also work underneath the supervision of a physician. So we do have that. With what they did with all their contracts in the state of Indiana was changed the structure to where they did reduce the contract price, where before they were covering the medications. They stopped covering the medications for the inmates. Some of them, some of the inmates do have some money on their accounts, so if they have that money, then that is deducted from that. But basically, that's what they did was shift the cost of those medications. Like I said, they, they tried to reduce the cost of the contract, which they did a little bit, but ultimately, that's what they did was change, shifted that.
Sheriff, you said that we're just have, we're just down three deputies right now, what about the jail? Were you fully staffed there?
The jail is fully staffed.
Good.
Well, it, it changes week to week depending on when DOC tells us to bring the inmates down that have been sentenced. I would say we average around between six and 12. We can be down as few as, you know, four, five, six, but we've had as many as 15 or more that are waiting to go to DOC. So it's, it's a, it's a very substantial problem in the state. I mean, it's not, you know, DeKalb County is, it's, it's every state, or I'm sorry, every county in the state, DOC is just overpopulated and they don't take anyone else until they release somebody. And we have no control over when they, on who we take and when we take them. They tell us when to bring them, and every single sheriff in the state is dealing with it. No, no, they can, I mean, it could be a female, that's one or two females at a time, but no, I mean, we can take as many as eight. It just kind of depends on what week and how many they tell us to bring. And the unfortunate part about that is, as Rick and I were talking, I don't, there's nothing taken into account of your population compared to how many DOC inmates you have. There's other surrounding counties that are very underneath their population who seem to send as many or have fewer in their population as, as DeKalb County does. It would be nice if there was some kind of algorithm or formula that would account for that, but there's not. Nothing we can figure out.
When you say population, you're talking about like the capacity that you're able to.
Capacity of, of the jail.
At the jail, so we could, we could be overflowing, but somebody that's half-full might.
Exactly, that's exactly what's, what's going on.
And if you've been paying attention to the Excel spreadsheet that the sheriff's department provides us every week, you know, we of course have never hit the mark of having no more than 80. You know, we've always been more than that, now it's not as bad as it could be because of community corrections, thankfully, but the sheriff and I have also talked about the fact that it seems that the convicted people that we have in jail seems to be somewhat steady, 30, 32, 33, somewhere in there. But the number of people that have been arrested and not been to jail yet continues to climb. Because I was asking, is it the, is it the fault of the courts? That they're just not processing these people fast enough? Or are the deputies arresting more people than we used to have, more crime being committed? And I don't know that we've ever come to a real conclusion as to what that is, but, I mean, the courts are processing them as fast as they can. But still, those people are not convicted. And while everybody deserves equal treatment, I believe that we probably have a, a lar, a little bit larger responsibility to those people that are in jail that have not been convicted yet. We want to, we, you know, it's, it's, you know, the jail, the point being, the jail is still something that we have to address. And we're working towards that, but it has to stay uppermost in our mind that that's going to be one of our biggest expenses that we've had in years is to, to correct that. So and, and the sheriff is doing, the sheriff and the department are doing an excellent job of, of working with what they've got. You've gotten the, the elevators fixed, you know, I don't think there's flooding in the, in the lobby anymore. That's been, been taken care of, we've replaced chillers and everything else. But the jail is just a big expense, and they're doing the best they can.
And we appreciate that, the, the county did allocate about $500,000, I think, last year. So we were able to do work on the chiller and many of the systems we have do, address a lot of the plumbing issues that we have. And we're, we're getting along.
Sheriff, anything else?
I don't have anything else.
Does anybody else in the council have any questions for the sheriff? Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Brady.
Thank you.
Okay, we're close to break time, let's go ahead and take 10 minutes, come back at 5 after 10. And Bill Hartman, Commissioner next in, and we'll do Commissioner Hartman.
I know.
You're all set.
And, you know, I don't have, I'm not offended by the fact we want to send an email that said...
It's on.
Okay. We're back in session. At this time, we'll hear from Commissioners. Commissioner Hartman.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Very briefly, we made some, a few changes. If you look on the first page, down around 32,000 TNR, that's trap, neuter, and release. That's a new program. It started up last year, become very successful. And we basically increased their funds, I believe it was 4,500 last year. We've increased that to 8,000. It seems like the only logical, economical way of controlling the cat population in the county. And so we've, we've increased that amount. We also have this Shandaro horse rescue. And that is, if the animal control officer has a larger animal like a horse, there's no place to take that horse. And we don't know if it'll be needed, but we thought we'd be up, up ahead of the game with this and have some money in there. We have a shelter, you know, this organization will take these horses and, and take care of them and probably try to find them a home. And that's, that money's basically has come off the humane shelter budget. We reduced that because they could not fulfill their contract. So we thought we changed, switching that money over to the other two entities, there better be a use of those funds. Another item of interest, Alliance Industries, give up their, their donation or, I guess you call it a donation to those, those folks. They do a great job. It's a good project, good, uh, good operation. On the third page, number 62, county buildings improvements and repairs, we doubled that to 200,000. And that will become, become under the jurisdiction of Larry Lane. We'll be changing his job description to reflect additional responsibilities so that all projects involving remodeling courthouse, major repairs will go to Larry Lane first. He would devise a plan, line up the bids, and then bring it to Commissioners, Commissioners final improvement. Uh, that's pretty much it. Any questions?
You didn't do it, I don't.
Will our building study kind of help us set a priority of what we need to do?
It probably would have some effect to that extent, absolutely.
Right. Until that's done, there's really no benefit in getting a long-range plan until we get all that in place and have that information.
Absolutely.
Using the amount for the Northeast Centers zeroed out, I assume it's because we don't know what that amount is yet?
Not till next year.
A one?
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't have it yet.
Okay.
It'll be that or a little bit more, probably a little bit more, it usually is.
I don't, you know, I don't know if, I don't, the Northeast Center, I'm sure doesn't qualify under the recent ruling or the new, or the new law that was passed by the legislature this year. But in trying to grab, get a handle on this, there was a provision in one of the bills that passed and has been signed that if the CEO of the mental health organization is paid more than, and I believe the salary was $445,000, then the county was not responsible for making their payment. They were trying, apparently they wouldn't, they wouldn't listen to reason without being struck with a stick.
And that's, that's what you had.
And there was, there was one that was being paid more than that, so. Yeah, it's, it's not, it's not just mental health, Amy. Honestly, some of the salaries that their not-for-profit hospital corporations are making at the CEO level is obscene. Believe me, it is, and it just, somehow you got to get a hold of it. We don't have anything for...
Your Commissioner's salary is under 400,000 this year, correct?
Yes.
Just under.
Yeah, just a little bit.
Just checking.
Retire. It's that last, it's that last paycheck before retirement, you know?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's the big one.
I actually volunteered to give up my stipend, but it's still in there.
Hard to give money away, isn't it?
That's right.
And maybe I missed it, the telecommunications has been zeroed out too. Is there...
I actually moved that to IT. I increased IT's telecommunications for some unknown reason, many moons ago. For some reason, they had Commissioners pay a little bit and IT pay the rest. I have no idea why. So we're putting it all under IT where it makes sense.
Bill, I saw the humane shelters going down. Is that because we're putting money into animal, more money into animal control and having the county pay for that?
Yes.
I assume that's why.
The main reason, though, they couldn't fulfill their contract. And so we weren't getting what we was paying for. And that was the reason, that was the motivation, actually, to switch that money in. And it's a combination of the two, I would say. And they agreed, they admitted they couldn't fulfill the contract. It wasn't us saying, you're not fulfilling it. They, they agreed, admitted that they could not fulfill it.
How does that, this is kind of in the weeds a little bit, but how does that cat program work? I mean, I have a neighbor with a barn with about 40 cats in it. They all come over to my, my property.
Trap, neuter, and release, they would do up to, if I remember right.
You call them?
Yeah.
With Deacon County money. They then asked the homeowner to contribute another four, which is approximately $50 each. And they've had pretty good success with that, but I think the max is eight between the county funded and, and what the homeowner would match.
You let them know, and then they will either provide you a trap if you don't have one, get them, they'll come pick them up, or you'll take them to the home. Then they transport them down to the facility, take care of them, bring them back, and you pick them up the next day.
Yeah. That's the release part of it, they go back to where they come from.
So these cats are not just feral cats, they're personal cats of people, like Bob's referring to his neighbor as, did you say 40?
They're just feral cats.
They're all, they are feral cats.
Yeah, they're just all, he can't catch them or anything.
Gotcha, they're not ones that he's just...
Yeah, old barns, these are old kind of...
Oh, interesting. I don't know that he knows that that program is available, so I'll, I'll let him know.
What do you do, take them up and drop them off in the county so they can collect them?
Bill, you got anything else to add? Do you have anything else to add?
I do not.
Does anybody else have any questions for Bill on the Commissioner's side?
Yes. RV County never used it, there's no committee, there's nothing happening.
It, it wasn't for like...
And so we basically moved that money over to the maintenance.
The other, Anton and the other one, those were combined together a couple of years ago. We weren't paying to, those were combined together. The one that zeroed was just there in case the Commissioners found a building or something they wanted to purchase, but...
But we haven't used it, it's just, yeah.
Never.
But, you know, that's, taking a look at what's on this list here, that's one of those funds that's going to go away in the next two years. And all of these expenses are going, we're going to have to create some other way for the Commissioners to get funding to do a number of these things. And Ben Parker did point out to us yesterday, and notice there's a million dollars in there that the Commissioners give to the Highway Department to fund some of their issues. And there's, there's money in this particular budget for a bridge. Those are all, those are all issues that we need to keep at the top of our mind, that the Commissioners are not going to have this source of money. We're going to have to make sure they have a different source.
So...
To make these payments.
Okay, let me a couple, cover a couple of things there. Their administrative line item, number 24, that will have money in it by the time we advertise, once I finalize all the nitty-gritty. The bridge is in there because of the claim adjustments that we did with the ARPA dollars so that we could spend out all the ARPA dollars and be done with that grant part. So the money then for the bridge was technically in the lighted fund because we had adjusted out some claims from lighted. So that bridge thing is always there. That is basically there because it's ARPA dollars.
It's an accounting thing.
Yeah. So that won't always be there. But the bond payment is the biggest thing.
And that's the administrative funds?
No, it's all the way, it should be all the way at the bottom. The administrative funds, I haven't figured their value for that yet.
Okay, I see it, yeah. Okay. All right, but, you know, these, they pay a lot of expenses out of this account, and highway is number one to think about.
They just redid it.
Just, it's about to be, we have, did we, did?
Yep.
Did it Monday.
Just did it Monday. So the three, it's going from 250 to 300,000, and then I believe the next year is 325, and then 350.
Yes.
Your take?
We were pleasantly surprised. I anticipated a lot higher number.
Yeah.
Considering all the inflation since that was signed and the fact, and they're going to put on supposedly another truck in the county.
In DeKalb County.
Yeah.
And how many years is that for, Bill?
Three.
Three years. Currently, we have a truck at, at Ashley Hudson?
No.
Or no?
Auburn, Garrett, and Butler.
Auburn, Garrett, and Butler. Where are they considering the, the next truck, St. Joe or Spencerville or Ashley Hudson?
I think it'd be more of a floater.
Here locally. Here at the hospital.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Bill? Hearing none, thank you, Bill. Appreciate you coming in.
Thanks, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
Do we have anybody else coming in?
Okay, I have a quick question on, we're trying to get, we're trying to get people to come early. So do you guys actually see any reason why weights and measures needs to come? He, he's trying to get here by 2:00, but his budget is so little and he actually went down by 150 dollars.
Is that something the Commissioners can talk to or talk about?
I know in the past, we've not had them come in at different times for weights and measurements, and I'm not opposed to...
Hey, if he doesn't want to come, don't let, you don't need...
No, it's not that he doesn't want to come. He originally could not come anytime before 3:00. We've contacted him, now he can't come, 2:00 is the earliest he can get here. But with the way you guys are going, you're going to be sitting and waiting until he gets here at 2:00.
Would Jason move up?
He's already been here.
Oh, Jason Meeks already been here?
Mm-hmm.
Do we have consensus from the council to not have weights and measurements come in?
Should be.
I would feel more comfortable, if you don't mind, if we ask him if he doesn't want to come in, just because he may want to present something at his budget.
That's fine.
Yes, that's...
We've, we've asked him to come at 2:00 now, and he's going to, but just...
His budget is very, very small.
Very well may not need to come in, but I just would feel better if you guys are okay with that. Yes, if you don't mind.
That is what I was planning, but I needed to get your guys' approval that it was okay if he didn't.
He's spoken, so follow up.
Okay, while we've got a few minutes here, I want to bring up something from yesterday's meeting here. We need to have a schedule, a public hearing regarding the weight and wheel taxes here. And I think we need to be doing it fairly soon. Couple of things on that. One, I, I'm not opposed to a night meeting on this to get more public input on this. And two, where would we have it? Because we may have quite a few people, we may not be able to accommodate them here in this court here. So open for discussion, but I do think we need, before the next meeting, schedule a public hearing.
I'm not opposed to an evening meeting. One of the questions about relocating would be, are we going to be able to have the technology there to cover? Are, are we mandated to do that in every public hearing?
Dave, why don't, why don't we ask City of Auburn if we could use the council chambers? Because they have the equipment that's set up there. Now, if you, I listened to their plan commission meeting on Tuesday. I hope they, they improve the microphones, but the, the cameras are there.
And why are we relocating?
Because of the people that we anticipate coming in.
We may have a larger crowd here for this one.
We had huge crowds for solar. And IT was able to put stuff out there.
You, Amy, you said out there when we were having the solar, do you think we can handle that with this?
No, I think it's difficult for people that want to testify or want to speak if they're way on the outside.
Dana, can we have a meet in your office and just gather around computer screens? Large group? You'll be surveying.
Well, now, maybe, why don't you, why don't we call up the Judge Grimm and see if we can use Circuit Court?
It's at a bigger place.
What's their capacity, Rick?
I couldn't tell you the number, but, I mean, Tuesday's meeting, I, I actually went down to the meeting and it was, it was overflowing, so I walked, I went home and, and watched it online. But I would imagine it probably holds 50 anyway, if not more. Yeah.
Easily.
Well...
I think we need to get some consensus here. First of all, does the council agree or disagree on trying to have a meeting between now and the next meeting here regarding this, the public hearing part? Do we have consent?
Don said he could have the, Don can have the paperwork ready. The ordinance, he can have it.
We're not...
We'll check on that. We, we need to get, come to agreement.
We have to come to agreement on how we're gonna set this up. Are we gonna go on a sliding scale, or we're gonna set straight rates or something? We have to decide that and present it one way or the other way and see what the people say, and then come back and say, this is how we're gonna do it. So we got, we were two steps behind having Don have his job done, too.
It's up to the councils. Council wishes whether we want to try to do this between now and the August meeting or not.
Well, I think we should, just to get feedback so that we can present something to have Don get something done, and we can go from there.
One, and I did get an email, a text message yesterday after our meeting from one of the local farmers that did a screenshot of the previous ordinance that was done that did not have any line items for farm equipment. And we need to make sure that that gets corrected.
It didn't or did?
It did not.
What do you mean by farm?
Well, it, you know, there was, there was not a line that specified a farm semi. There are some classifications within the, within the licensing that weren't included. Farm equipment being one of them.
Oh, you mean, you're talking about ag trailers?
Yes.
Ag trailers. What Jennifer gave us, they had a, you know, for commercials and ag trailers. What Jennifer gave us, they had a, you know, for commercials and ag trailers on there.
And we had the, we had the information on how many of those were licensed in the county. But what this person just pointed out, that on the ordinance, it had listed the different vehicles and blank lines for the, for the amount that we were going to charge, but it did not have any lines for farm equipment. So, you just, making sure that we made a special designation for the farm equipment, that's the point.
Okay, let's back up. First of all, do we want to try, and maybe we need to vote on this, I don't know if we can do it with consensus or not, try to have a meeting before the August meeting here, to try to have a public hearing? So, do we do it on consensus? August 13th, so we need to have it before August 13th. So, do we have consensus to have a meeting, public hearing before? Okay, we have consensus. The next thing is, we do not do very many evening meetings. Is this something that we want to do an evening meeting or a day meeting?
Well, it depends where you have it. If you have a day meeting, you can have the people there. If you have evening meetings, like solar's, like we did with the plan commission, you'll have more people come to it. I think we should do it at evening meeting.
I agree. I think we need transparency on that.
And, I'm trying to find my calendar.
But that's up to the council. Again, do we have consensus? Let's start with an evening meeting.
Yeah.
Consensus?
As long as, I'm all for evening meeting as long as it's on the right day, because, you know, other, have other things planned in some of the evenings, so...
Let's, let's take a look at some possible dates.
How many days do we have to have it advertised out? Like, how far out do we have to start picking dates?
If it's a special meeting, you just need 48 hours.
And I am...
I can tell you the week of the 21st, so the 21st, 22nd, 23rd would be out if you're expecting anybody in my office to be there, which I need to be.
I would say, how about July 30th? That's a Wednesday. Are you on vacation that week, the week we planned this, Amy?
No.
I think that last week of July, we got the 29th and 30th as the two days I'm going to suggest, that Tuesday or...
What about the Thursday, the 31st?
About 30th, yeah, you know, those three days.
Is there any county schedule or city meetings that happen?
Probably not. They'd mostly do Tuesdays and Wednesdays, I think. I just emailed Brandy to find out what the capacity of the council chambers are over there.
What would the council's pleasure be on for Tuesday dates? Now, we're looking at last week of July.
Those all work. Tuesday, Wednesday.
I may be able to work that week. Rick?
Wednesday's the only day that I prefer not to do it. I have the 30th.
I'm not available on Tuesday, the 22nd.
The week after that.
The week after, okay.
29th?
29th available, 31st.
Yeah. If the city's going to, if, if we were to use the city, they would probably have a meeting scheduled on the 30, on that. Well, is that the fifth, wait a minute, is that the fifth?
According to...
Is that the fifth Tuesday?
According to their online calendar, they do not have anything on the 29th, 30th, or 31st.
Okay, well, 29th or 31st would be the better for me.
What are the, Rick, what are the downtown events, like, their third Thursday, that would be not the third Thursday?
No, this is the fifth Thursday.
This would be the fifth Thursday.
But, oh, so we're off of the downtown event?
Yeah, there's no cruises.
No Main Streets or anything?
No cruises in or anything, so...
Usually, your cruise is on Friday night, not Thursday night.
Well, they have no, they're Thursday night downtown cruises.
Oh, do they?
Yeah. They're Thursday, I think, so...
Yeah, so we're good.
Yeah, or Thursdays next week.
Well, and if, if we can pick a date between now and Friday, we're going to do Coffee and Donuts at Cruz Plaza and talk about the wheel tax again on Saturday this week.
I think we should...
And we could announce it there that we're going, what day we would have a special meeting.
I think we should try for the Thursday, the 31st.
Okay.
Any objections? Is it okay with...
Yeah, yeah. Tuesday, Thursday, both endings, fine with me.
About the only two day...
31st, 31st.
Bob?
I'm good.
I'll make it work.
Dave?
I'm good.
Rick?
Yeah, I'm good.
Hey, July 31st. Oh, whoa, 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 I got to ask the main lady, Susan, 31st.
I'm available, Bill, available, but I still think that you shouldn't have it over there. I think it's going to be crazy, and if you want to revisit it, you're not going to be able to hear any of it.
I, I think, yeah.
When I say where, we're just saying the date.
Date, 31st, Rob's place. I really, I don't really like going out on my own.
You go out of your own zone, comfort zone?
Yeah. But I know what we went through with the plan commission.
But we'll run it pretty tight.
We have to, I think one thing before we decide what we're having, we'll have the president make that decision. We should talk to IT, Basely, Basely Butler, Basa, and make sure that if nothing else, he can set it up here, or if we got good enough communications down there. But I think as a county deal, we should try at least have it on county.
And I understand that it's only a technicality, and it's not going to make any difference. But we need to know if it is technically a public hearing or a public meeting, of which we're asking for comments. I mean, it's, it's a legal thing. Don's already said we don't need a public hearing.
Correct.
But just to make sure that we are doing everything correctly under the rules so that we don't come back six months from now and say, oh, wait a minute, you called it this, and it was supposed to be this, so the whole thing's negated.
That'd be a Don call, and Susan would advertise.
It's a public, it's a public meeting that the president will decide whether public will comment or not. It's not a public hearing.
Public meeting.
And Don said that yesterday. It is not a public hearing.
I think the whole gist behind it was to have input from the public, because you wanted to hear from the public.
We can do it. We can do that and call it a public meeting.
They'll do that at a public meeting.
Two minutes, and we can decide that later. I've been going along with two minutes, and we're going to run it tight. This is not going to get into a slugfest yelling match or anything, because it's just...
I'd like to find that, you know, I want to have a public meeting down Portland area. And the guy had a thing here, he hit the button, it started three minutes, three minutes, oh, it buzzed.
Actually, they just did that at the public hearing that they just did for the plan commission Tuesday at Auburn City. According to Brandy, the room capacity is 142, so...
Pretty good size, it's hard to beat.
Well, the thing of it is, that's fine. You have more room to sit and everything. I don't, I would rather be here, but that doesn't bother me any. And if it's a, a, what is it, if it's not a hearing, it's a meeting, do, does Susan even have to be there?
Yes, I have to be there. I'm statutorily your guys' secretary. Yes, I have to be there.
Well, we just recorded for you.
Does a public meeting have to be broadcast?
Yes.
Like a public hearing does? Okay, they both do.
This is a public meeting, it is broadcast.
And they have, and they have the capacity, they have the ability to do that.
You'd kind of want it to be, because there's some people that can't make it in, might be homebound or whatever.
Is the room open over there?
That, I don't know. I just asked how many would hold.
Let's take a look while we're talking about this. Let's take a look at the time. 6:30, 7?
The, I don't know what Butler does, I don't know what Garrett does, but I know that the Auburn City meetings that they have in the evening, they've been starting at 6:00.
6:00.
Well, I, I don't care.
The plan commission, when they have a public hearing, that's like the, like solar was, they started at 7:00. When they don't have, we usually start at 7:00, but when we have other things and we can move it up, we try to start at 6:00, where we don't have to worry about. I think you should start at 6:00, because if you're expecting 50 people to speak, even if it's two minutes.
Well, we'll put it, there'll be a cap on a meeting. I mean, if it's 6:00 to 8:00, then...
No, I think, I think we should, if you got to have, I think if you're going to have a hearing, you're going to have to let everybody speak.
It's not a hearing.
A meeting. Have a meeting.
It's not going to go until 2:00.
Yeah. You're, all we have to do is have our president and our secretary there, and the rest of us can go.
And the vice president, sitting very close to the president.
In front of the shield him from the doors.
I am not taking a bullet for you. You can shoot, yes, I will, because I don't want to be present again. Just go ahead and take the fire.
The work?
Especially if they're going to have to pass one, too.
I mean, sometimes it's hard enough to understand, it's the same.
Well, it, it does, it does illustrate the fact that we need a room that we can have public meetings in that has a capacity of more than 30 or 40.
The white room, the white room, yeah.
In the annex?
We use that for, we use that for the cume cap in Crease a number of years ago. I don't, well, we have, we have equipment, we can view things, but I don't know about recording things. That's something we should ask Basa about that.
Let's, let's get a consensus from the council here on this. Okay, how many would like, the consensus would be, have the hearing here in the commissioners' court?
I would.
County building.
County building, you mean?
A county building. I just, I think there's confusion if we have it in the city. All right, I'll not ask her if we can use the room.
All right.
No, I think it's a good idea, I'm just worried more about...
Well, no, I agree with you. There'd be people confused.
Especially since they're going to have to pass, they're going to have to deal with the same kind of tax, same...
Right. Does that also in view of all the county sheriff's department if we're here in the evening?
Yeah, you'll have to have security.
Yeah?
You'll have one. That's the same way as plan commission.
As opposed to asking the city to provide security for us?
6:00, 6:30, 7?
Six, six.
6:00 PM?
Six.
Six.
And a lot of meetings like this have a time limit on it. Do we want to go 6:00 to 8:00?
30.
6:00 to 8:30?
That's it.
That's fine.
6:00 to 8:30?
Yeah.
That's fine, I agree.
It's past my bedtime, but...
So, it'll be 6:00 to 8:30 PM?
Wear your pajamas, that's a true statement.
For purposes, we're looking at a public meeting in county building, July 31st, 6:00 to 8:30, 6:00 PM to 8:30 PM. And, and the whole purpose of this meeting is just public transparency, to give the public an input on a, on a piece of...
Very touchy.
Ordinance here from the county that you need to have some input in, at least someone's coming, or possibly coming.
Dave, I mean, you're going to be running the meeting and structuring it, but I, I think there's going to be a lot of input on both sides of this. I think there's some people that are for it, some people are against it. So, if you can structure it in a way that you alternate or something, so everybody gets it, you don't just have all the people against it talking, then there's no time left for the people for it.
No. And you also need to make some kind of instruction about repetitive, you know, you don't want 15 people coming up saying exactly the same thing about exactly the same issue.
And...
Yeah, that, and fine, yeah, yeah.
And about a two-minute time limit, you know? If you want to spend all your time talking about your credentials, that's prerogative. But there goes your two minutes, and don't expect to suddenly start talking about yea or nay.
Yeah. So, on the front end of this meeting, would it be wise for us to explain exactly what it means? Because I, on the front end of the meeting that night, to explain what it means, because some people just hear "wheel tax." You know, we understand that it's "wheel tax excise," that it's the whole, the whole picture.
Well, I think we need to set a preference there with the meeting, you know, just...
Yeah, we set it up front, we, we speak to it, somebody speaks to it. Say, here's what it involves, here's what it looks like, here's what the crossroads, you know, why we're having this, why we're even considering it.
Absolutely.
And the shortfalls that we're potentially going to experience in the next 24 to 36 months.
And we should, and it should be put on what Ben has given us, why we are pursuing it, is not only for the crossroad money, but it's also that, like Ben said, we can't replace a vehicle every year. We got to have some money to step up, and we have some roads to fix, and it needs to be done, and we don't have the money. We're going to be $10 million short, so...
And we have the, we have the information from Ben about what we need, it was that $10 million and how much it was every year. The other, the other question I think that the public is going to have is, I'm all for it if you do it at $5, but I'm totally against it if you do it at $25. So, you're going to have to have some examples of what the, what the numbers could be.
Jennifer, yeah. And the other deal is, the other deal is, you're going to have people against, I mean, the guys I've talked to says, if I'm going to pay my $80 for my semi sent down there, those people who can afford an antique car better be paying their 50. That's been a comment.
They're welcome to present that fact.
Yeah, I know. But that's going to be some of your resentment towards each other.
Sure. Excuse me, I just put them in my mouth, but...
We can have a meeting. I haven't been out. I haven't been out. Miscommunication and... ...receptions that people... Thirds. Well... Looking at like, is there a shortfall, whether it's a shortfall? Do... An idea maybe?
Yeah, that's a great thought. Social media, you know, we put it out there, however we would do it, whether it be like, say, a YouTube piece or text or what, you know?
I mean, that way it's not us collectively.
We have a couple departments that have Facebook pages that I'm sure they would put something out for.
But just a camp out in the council.
Well, you know, we have a lot of questions. That's a good question.
Just want to remind the council, bring your thick skin, because, you know, and your poker face, because we're not going to show emotion one way or another, we're going to just keep it there, and we're going to thank everybody, and that's the whole purpose of this, is to give the public a chance to participate on the transparent piece.
Clearly not a night for us to defend our side or our, it's to hear. Yeah, we're not trying to sell anything one way or the other. I mean, I think we all probably have an idea of what we're thinking at the moment, but hearing the input of our citizens may...
But we're grateful for anybody that turns up.
Absolutely, absolutely. Until we have to decide, we don't have to decide, so we definitely want to listen to our citizens.
There's no decision going to be made here.
Yeah.
Let's make sure we let Ben know.
Yep. So, okay, good discussion, you know, I'm sure there may be a few things we need to touch base on before, but we'll do that as we get closer and things kind of unfold here.
So, August 31st, 6:00 to 8:30 to Cow County Courthouse.
July 31st, 6:00 to 8:30.
I wrote August, I don't know what I'm thinking.
Does the Y have a big room? Does the Y have a great big room?
Not right now, it's all under construction.
You have it in the pickleball court?
If, 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 if it starts to get negative or a person or group or whatever, so we'll, we'll bang them out of order, and I have no problem doing that there, and we're gonna keep it civil, one way or another. Any comments?
I've been through this once with the solar fields.
I just think the communication that Amy talked about in advance would be very, very helpful, because we have to understand, we're, we live this and work in this every day. There's citizens that aren't so connected, and when they hear, all they're gonna hear is wheel tax, and they've heard that they're, we wanna, we need to build a jail someday. So they're gonna put those two things together and think, you're gonna wheel tax to build a jail. Well, they have nothing to do with each other, none of that money can be used for a jail. So that needs to be communicated ahead of time. It's really important that they know...
That's a good point, Amy.
You know, what, why we're raising, why we have to do this and, and what it's going for, what, how it'll be spent.
Okay, good job, everybody, so, all on the same page. Thank you. Okay, we have with us Brian Humberger. Come on down.
Morning, everyone.
Morning, Brian.
You bring breakfast, Brian? Did you bring breakfast with you?
Yes, it does.
Thanks for being here. Yeah. I'm home.
No, I was thinking about a long walk I took with your wife that we were missing.
A gavel's not your auto order, you were in order, so continue playing. Okay, Brian.
Wow.
Brian, is your mic on?
I thought I had. Perfect. So, but other than that, I cut where I could. Like I said, everything that went up is not something I can get Motorola to change. Yes, they're expensive, but I love them, they, they give us great service. Our radios are top-notch, so other than that, I did add in twelve thousand dollars for what we call Mevo kit. It's the maintenance plan. This is basically a case with six phones in it, a cradle point. So if we have to leave the, the center, the dispatchers grab that, they'll grab the other case, have the laptops that are coming from I T. We can go to Rick's house and set in his garage and answer our admin phones, our nine-one-one lines, and dispatch from our handheld radios there. We will not be reliant upon an internet connection with AES or any other provider other than A T and T and Verizon, because it's a dual system, so we can go anywhere we need to go. Uh, no, that was on the twelve twenty-two, account number three-three-six-three-zero, Mevo maintenance. And that is coming out of the statewide bu, nine-one-one budget and not our public safety law. Uh, that is the increase in all of our other maintenance, including our G I S managed services. Our spillman system is slowly moving to a monitored system by Motorola themselves versus our I T department, because our I T does a wonderful job, but this will be twenty-four-seven monitoring. They will know if that system's having a problem before we ever will, and it'll be fixed before we even know it.
Maintenance contract sounds like you're paying a lot of money.
Yes. And that, that monitoring that, like Motorola is doing, is actually something that a lot of high-end equipment is going to, I said, you know, at the, at the hospital, the G E and, and Samsung and all these other providers of X-ray equipment, C T, M R I, monitor those machines from, in the case of G E, I think it was up in Wisconsin, and they could actually tell us something was going wrong or something was wrong with that machine before we even knew it, and, and start a fix, and it, it is very beneficial. And when you're depending on, in nine-one-one and, and the dispatch, this is, this is a critical situation. We cannot, we cannot allow them to go down. This is a...
Because currently, when we do a patch or an upgrade, we have to take the system out of service and use our alternate backup system that was designed by our dispatchers and I T. By with the twenty-four-seven monitoring, they can do that, and we don't have to take our system out of service. Yes, that, that covers all of that.
Brian, when you and I talked about this, was, wasn't there something that you were paying for that we thought maybe should've flipped back to I T?
Uh, I tried to get the state nine-one-one board to cover our dark, dark fiber costs, and unfortunately, that does not cover that one.
Okay.
That's something I was hoping that the Commissioners can renegotiate with Auburn Essentials. We pay about fifty thousand dollars a year for the dark fiber internet connection between here and city data center and the backup center. Looking through the contract, these were all excess, um, their description, not mine, excess resources that they had, and they were willing to contract with us. But it's like fifty-two thousand dollars a year, and that number is what we're paying for that connectivity, because nobody else is on that portion of the fiber cable, but they themselves said they were excess. So I'd like to see that get renegotiated at some point. We've been paying that since the day we moved in. Uh, that came to about three-quarters of a million dollars we've paid in, for that connectivity.
Brian, you have anything else you'd like to add?
Uh, nope, just if you guys have any questions.
Anybody else have any questions for Brian?
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Related to the budget. The, if you call, if a citizen calls, uh, like the Garrett five-one-five-one number, does that feed through in non-office hours to?
Yes.
Nine-one-one?
The Sheriff's Department, Auburn P D, Garrett P D, Butler P D, uh, all have phones in their lobbies. So during non-business hours, you walk in, pick that up, it rings into central dispatch.
So if a person has an issue that's non-life-threatening, not really an emergency, what number should someone call?
Uh, they can either call our three-three-three-seven-nine-one-one, or if it's like in the city of Garrett, call your five-one-five-one, and it'll come straight to us.
Good to know. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
On your five-year plan, you have the H V A C replacement in twenty twenty-eight. Is that, I'm gonna think of, does it need to wait till that, if there was extra funding?
If we can do it sooner, I would love that. Um, when they designed the building, they designed the building using basically residential heat pumps and A C units on the outside. They all have a ten-to-twelve-year lifespan, and heat pumps are not the way to go in Indiana, unless you buy a very high-dollar unit. From my days as a home inspector, you have to buy on a three- or four-thousand-dollar unit that will actually function below fifty degrees. And I think the money would be better served just using a regular A C unit, a regular furnace. It would just be a lot more beneficial, and if we could do it sooner, I would love it.
What issues are you experiencing?
Um, well, they're all coming to the end of life. Uh, there, two units have been replaced as far as A C units, uh, since we've been out there, uh, but everything's just coming to the end of life. Ten-to-fifteen-year span is what the life expectancy is, and we're coming, and I would rather have it pre-planned and do everything at once instead of doing this, doing piecemeal. Oh, well, we've, we've replaced this one, we replaced this one. Our maintenance department, please be very generous to them, and, and the wages department. Rick Snyder has been a great benefit, but the systems are just getting old, and Rick will only be able to do so much with them. And the way the system was designed, I think they can do a little redesigning when they, when we replace it, that'll make it more efficient for the entire building. Apparently, we have one thermostat for air conditioning and one thermostat for heat in the same room. It doesn't make sense. No, so... Yes. I was trying to plan ahead, but the sooner we could do it would be the better. Like you said, it'll be cheaper. Um, I mean, we can do bids if we have to, uh, but Cody from Auburn Heating, uh, is where I base those numbers off of. And that's about a year or two years old, those numbers. I did inflate them a little bit, but, um, it, it's a big project, but, uh, yeah, the sooner the, the better for me. But however it works in the, the county's budget plan is where we'll go.
We don't want it to happen in an emergency status, and that costs us even more.
Exactly, and that's one of the benefits of now having three people in the maintenance department. Everybody was doing their own thing as far as, well, you called Auburn Heating, you called Masters. Now we're bringing all this into, we're using one vendor for what we need, instead of everybody using separate. And we've seen a good cost savings with that. Yes.
All right, Brian.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Brian.
Was maintenance people under the Commissioners' budget?
They're under three. They're split apart.
Yeah, but...
Well, one of them. So Larry and Evan are under courthouse, and then, um, Rick is paid by three different funds, because, um, the LOA fund, eleven-seventy pays for a third. The D C C community correction grant pays for a third, and then a third of it is under courthouse.
Well, don't we used to have a courthouse budget? Was that Commissioner?
It was under Commissioners.
That was kinda thin for it. It used to be as...
It is, it's...
Yeah?
He just didn't talk about it.
Oh, okay, so it's, so we don't have to talk about it, right?
There's nothing that really, nothing that changed.
Well, someone...
But it was in the Commissioner package.
Well, someone told me they were gonna raise their, their salaries up quite a bit. I see they didn't, their salaries. No, for Commissioners' stuff.
No, I told them that they had to leave them at no increase, and it was the council that decided it.
What?
Oh, no, they had discussed possibly doing one full-time, but they decided they didn't.
It'll never pass.
Do anymore.
I'll fight it, too. I mean, I'll fight that more than I would.
Oh, yeah, Patrick's a great job.
Yeah. You heard what I said yesterday.
Okay.
They've really done a good job of keeping it down.
Continuing on. Ready to go.
The talkers.
Okay, Becky Calhoun from Drug Free Decal, please. Hi, Becky.
Guys having a great day?
We're just charming.
It's a great day. Sun shining. It's all good. All right, so what we put in the budget is, I believe I put in there 58,000. So as you may recall, we get the funds that are just from court fees for drug and alcohol offenses is what goes into Drug Free Communities Fund. Our particular account has some excess in it from where we weren't able to use some dollars for a couple of years back in 2017, I think. 2018, we started to spend those dollars down. So what you see in the estimate is a projection, obviously, of what we'll have in that budget, which is leaving the remaining amount from projected the end of 2025 would be around $58,000, and that's taking the last three years of actual income and doing an average of that projected into the income base with what we have left in that previous account.
Becky, let me interrupt you real quick. If you're looking at your budget projection, those amounts haven't been put in there yet. So it's just go off of her initial, like her packet that looks like this, sorry, Rick, that looks like this for her amounts right now.
Yeah.
Yep, you got it. Thank you. Sorry, Becky.
No, you're fine. You're fine. So what we actually spent out last year, I think we had budgeted, what did we put into the budget for 2024, was 89,000, and what we actually spent out was just under 50,000, which is 49,716. Again, for the beginning of 2025, we had a projected budget of 78,000. Our actual spend out will be closer to that 50,000 as we're continuing to spend out what we put in the account for the current year and the excess. Going into 2026, approximately 58,000 is what we're projecting. Again, we will probably spend out right around that 50,000 mark, so that going into 2027, we will be pretty much spent down what is left of that excess money. So that's kind of where we're at with how we projected. I know for the state, when we do our state ICJI projections, we have to say we have available to spend every dollar in the account. We don't have to actually spend it. So we have, working with the commissioners and the coalition, felt like it was better to spread that excess out rather than going, okay, one year we're giving out a ton of money, and then the next year there's no money. We've been very cautious about how we spend that excess. Are there any questions? I mean, it's pretty basic. We do, by the statute, we can do of the income, 25% for administrative, 25 for justice, 25 for prevention, and 25% for treatment, and that's how it's allocated in the budget. So that's how it comes out. If I spend $1 over in administration, the state will come back and yell at me and tell me that my budget is not right. So when we're looking at actual contractual services, those are the, now that's award expenditures. So contractual services is what, the administration portion is what my fees are. So as the coordinator, I'm contracted to do $1,000 a month for my services for them.
What kind of programs do you?
So the coalition as a whole, so the coalition is working at pulling all those pieces together from around the county. So you have all the folks from prevention, treatment, justice, everybody's at the table, and then we're looking at what are the actual gaps and how can we fill those, and making sure that we're going, okay, so is there a gap in programming at the schools for vaping was a big one. So we were seeing that. We worked then with the health department to use, which we can't use now because they changed everything, but the healthy first dollars to address vaping issues in the schools. So I mean, that's kind of coordinating those pieces to say, how do we make sure that we're getting things done that need to be done and use the resources we have effectively. When you're looking at what gets funded out of here, primarily, you have some programs with justice, those dollars are going primarily towards our narcotics division, so for undercover work, because getting money for that work that you don't have to have a receipt for every day, you don't get one from drug dealers. So that's important dollars that go there. With our treatment, we do a lot of support of the houses, so that when folks are coming into the houses, they're able to come in and they're able to get the services they need so that they can then be successful. A lot of that goes to drug testing because they have to be able to show they're continually being clean. When we're working with the courts, a lot of the dollars for, again, go into drug testing for those that are in the court program, because when you look at the dollars that are available for probation in the court systems to do the testing, there's not enough dollars there. So we facilitate some of that. We work with Change Academy and do some dollars there. When the kids come to change, almost all of them come in with some level of drug use. So when they're getting tested, they're testing to see where are they at versus where they came in. So is it going down? Is it going up? And what are we seeing? I just got a report back. So one of the requirements with getting the grant dollars is you have to be a part of the coalition, active partner in the coalition, and you have to give reports back. So David was in last month and did the report on where the change dollars have gone. They had seen a significant number of kiddos that had a higher level after, of use from initial baseline, and were able to connect those kids up. Every one of those kids was either already referred to some treatment or they were able to get them connected to a treatment if they hadn't already been in the house. So that's kind of how that is used in terms of prevention and peace. You know, how do we make sure that they can move forward? Other questions? I mean, this is not ever, ever any dollars that come out of any budget other than what actually has to go for that. Sometime down the line, we might have to ask for more money. Our supporters with the state, so get the dollars more allocated, whatever. That's a whole other conversation, isn't it? Anything else I can answer for you guys?
Does anybody have any questions for Becky?
I try to keep it short and sweet.
Thanks, and you did a great job. Thanks, Becky.
You guys have a good day.
Do they have anybody else coming?
Hey, I mean, I was really, I will get up there, and he said, oh, you have to have your bag checked on you. Hey, I mean, we don't want to offend you, but we have to.
Can we get an auditor count before the end of the day today?
You should already have it. You already passed them out.
It just doesn't have a title page on it.
I think we're missing a paper. Oh, there's no Form 144.
Yeah.
The front page, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, there was no page, yeah.
I just packed this.
You just don't have this.
I packed out one packet that...
You don't have a paper that says auditor.
I think the other thing that wasn't, the other thing that wasn't in there was whatever council budget.
I thought I, I thought I lost the cover sheet, but I didn't. I thought I papered it up to elsewhere. Jody just had a name for it. Oh, right here. I'll send it to you. Can we get it today?
I don't even have it done yet. Yeah.
That's the only one I didn't want, because this is a lot easier to follow than...
Where is the council budget with the commissioner's?
They did. They just passed it around. It's not what, no, it's not. It's on its own.
Oh, I see it.
Just because they were extra, you can pass them back.
She's getting frustrated with us.
Breathe, Susan. One, two, three.
What? It's like raising kids.
No, nobody's coming. We're going to wait for lunch early.
Care about that, but okay.
So we're going to go till 1 o'clock then on lunch?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Pardon?
Yeah, I turned us back on.
Okay, council is back in session. Next we have Mark Olivero, Public Defender's Office. We're going to wait. Are you going to be able to?
That's up to you.
No, that's fine. We can go ahead and go.
Okay, good. Mark is in jury trial, so you get me today. We just entered same as last year's budget. No increases on anything. The only thing we added was for Axon, which is a contract we entered into for the cloud storage and discovery thing. So that's the only thing. for the cloud storage and discovery thing. So that's the only thing new. So, any questions?
Well, we know that you're part of the misdemeanor study. Is there any estimate as to how much? What expense do we have on the misdemeanor side? What, do we got a couple of attorneys?
Yeah, so right now, we have two misdemeanor attorneys that we don't get reimbursed for. And I think their combined salary is like seventy, seventy-nine thousand right now. So we will, starting in July for the next quarter, third quarter, we'll get forty percent reimbursement on that. And probably increase a little bit. Sarah does the paralegal work for them. And we enter her as a percentage of what misdemeanor work she does. Well, now we can lower her, or now she'll get full reimbursement at forty percent. Does that make sense?
Did the, we were having an issue with getting, attracting and keeping attorneys. We did just change and allow them benefits. Has that helped at all, or?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, we have a full house and everybody's happy.
Okay, good. Very good.
Any other questions?
The misdemeanor program is eighteen months. They were gonna do it for four years, but because of state budget cuts, they got cut back. So the pilot program's only for eighteen months. In eighteen months, they can either extend the pilot program, or get rid of it, or make it permanent.
Okay, here comes your backup.
Have it just right, Kevin.
We just.
So, any other questions for Cheryl or Kevin? Hearing done, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Unless you've got something to add.
I don't know if you guys have heard, but we did get, as one of the pilot counties, for the reimbursement for misdemeanors. So we're really excited about that. Forty percent reimbursement for all the misdemeanor PDs and their costs and everything. And they only picked nine counties. So PD staff did a good job of getting all the information that the state needed in order for us to win that thing. So it'd be really good for the county. Thanks.
Yes, hopefully they can make it permanent in the future.
Depends on the boys downstate. All right, thanks.
Thanks.
Thanks, Kevin.
All right, so we only have two left. That's it.
You only have two left?
Looking at a disco.
Do we need to look at the one for the council? Yeah, do we need to, are we already done with that one?
I already filed mine. Is there anything you want to point out?
You had that in your budget presentation already, though, didn't you? Yeah, I mean, we looked at it, but yeah, you can bring up it. Go ahead and do it.
What is, what did the state put down as inflation rate this year? Have they given a number?
What the state put down as the inflation rate this year? Well.
She's already looked it up.
I just, I just looked it up. It says it's four point.
That's, that's the Fed. The growth quotient's been set at four percent.
Oh, so they set it at four. Wow.
They actually set it for, I think, maybe two years. That it, that no matter what the DLGF comes up with, it can never be more than four percent by, by the legislation that went through this year.
And they did have some, they did have some extra numbers in here because of the cost of health insurance that they said that they have never done, they have never pulled in before. But that's what kind of moved some things around. It went up a little bit because of that, specifically health insurance costs. They, just the annual inflation rate across the, across the board, like Fed-wise. The consultant is Jeff Peters, is our financial consultant, and the contractual services, or whatever that was called. That would be, that's where the timekeeping system will be paid from if we, I mean, we might not even need that next year. It just depends when we get it implemented.
So it doesn't have a?
You discussed that one when you were talking.
It's got a green highlighter.
I mean, I love the paper.
Did we, in the past?
It would have green like this.
In the past, Susan, you put a number of items duplicated in different spots so that we could make decisions later. Did you do that again this year?
Or, yeah, I mean, I'm not done doing the final check, everything. But all that will be in September.
Have to consider anything for Sunny Meadows. I mean, technically, is it?
Oh, I can talk about that. Well, it's sunsetted to be done by May because insurance is done in May. So I basically just took theirs and cut it in half across the board.
How many residents do we have right now?
Seventeen with four getting ready to leave, I believe.
How many residents we got in Sunny Meadows right now?
Our goal is end of the year, or by May? How difficult is it for those residents to find?
Very.
Sorry. I just, I mean, I know the difficulty with housing, just in general.
Some of the problem was, some of the paperwork, without getting into too many details with it being a public meeting, some of the paperwork that should have been already there wasn't, so we had to go get that paperwork. So we thought we were starting kind of here. When Bren and I first looked into it, we were actually coming back here. So now we're kind of here. And like, two of the residents met with some, met with a home and last week, and now they're gonna be out, going to be transitioned to that house next week. I mean, things can move very quickly. It just depends on how those, those connections meet, so.
And the only reason I ask, we just did a fundraiser for CAS Housing. And we were just discussing housing opportunities for those folks, and that's just what made me think of Sunny Meadows.
Yeah, so, no problem.
Well, how much was the liability insurance for out there? That's quite a bit, wasn't it?
Thirty-four, I think.
Yeah.
Was that thirty-one thousand separate?
August thirteenth, well, no, July thirty-first.
Well, yeah.
And then August thirteenth.
And we're, it's not until September we're gonna discuss, discuss these budgets, right? Are we gonna do it?
So, when you guys pass your calendar for this year, you have September third and fourth, I believe, but you changed the third and apparently the fourth. You, both of them, you're not starting until 5:00 PM. We generally have at least a day and a half to go through all of that. So those nights are gonna be long. I mean, extremely long.
Both of them in the evening?
That's, you guys wanted both of them not to start until five. So just be prepared to be here for a very long time.
Okay, Rhonda, we're ready. If you're ready. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Once a year, we're here again doing our budget. I do want you to know, in years past, we always had a, you know, each line item. That's different this year. Do you realize what I'm saying? The, yeah. So I did do my very best on following the guidelines from the council, not to give ourselves any raise for any line item. And I did that, except in one category, Memorial Day flags. That is our largest budgeted item, aside from payroll. I'm out of breath a little bit. I ran up them stairs. In 2025, I ordered 5,532 Memorial Day flags, and those were a dollar for each. A way to save the county tax dollars, our department, we go down and pick up our shipment. I go down with my SUV, my assistant goes down with her SUV, and we save about $300 in freight and shipping by doing that. I am requesting an additional $90 for Memorial Day flags for next year in 2026. Keeping in mind that our department provides flags to the DeKalb County buildings, such as Courthouse, NX Building, Highway Department, 911, and our building across the street, which we share with the Health Department. Furthermore, mindful of the fact that the Memorial Day flag quantity increases each year based on the number of new DeKalb County veterans that pass away. In addition, we purchase the little tiny, small flags that you have at the parades, events, and holidays. So we have those as well. We even have one of the school systems, who was that? DeKalb County Middle School come over and say, hey, we're having, not really an event, but we're talking about our nation, and could we get some of those little flags from you? Sure you can. Sure you can. You're our DeKalb County people. We take good care of you. So. But that is the one area that I did need to increase the budget ever so slightly, like I said, $90. Being mindful that we have to, kind of have to change our thinking a little bit with all the cuts, state budget. On Form 144, State Board of Accounts Form 144, I have requested a 2.4% wage increase for both myself and my deputy based off next year's projected cost of living adjustment. So I did not include that on my budget that I submitted, but I sure did include that on that state form, Form 144. Nope, I think that's everything. Mine was pretty simple. Pretty simple.
Anybody have any questions for Rhonda? Hearing done. Thank you, Rob. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
I did too at first. I thought, did she just say nine dollars?
Yeah.
So she buys the big flags and everything that hangs around there?
This number?
No, because they were not supposed to put increases in the system.
This is with it, and this is without. Oh, got it, okay. If they can't follow the instructions, they can't.
Instructions, those people that followed instructions will give them a raise, and the ones that didn't follow instructions.
I couldn't figure out where the number came from, so I kind of, okay.
Well, then I probably should have made a list of all the ones that I changed when I was looking at it the other night. True. We can verify what you printed versus what I changed.
Okay, I have one more thing. Sorry. It's after lunch. I'm awake. I'm looking at the cal, the website calendar, and it says September 3rd, 9:00 AM, County Council Regular Meeting, followed by Budget Public Hearing. The next day, Thursday, says 5:00 PM. Okay, that's what I wrote down in my book, that's why.
I've got 5:00 PM on my calendar.
It doesn't, I know.
For Wednesday and Thursday?
For Wednesday and Thursday.
I only wrote it down for Thursday, so the Wednesday is what threw me off.
Nice one.
I thought we were doing, I thought it was, we were doing one night of those two.
At the time, if you remember right, Bob Kraft said, "I'm not staying." The whole starting at 5:00 PM.
Um, I think at lunch, he said he had meetings. It's just, I mean, I saw golf leagues going on. It's really hard for me to do two nights because all of my kids go back to school first of August. It becomes the Dave and Amy show.
Did we change that because it's going to be a public hearing?
Third, for sure, is.
And I wrote down one night of two late, not two.
Those are always a public hearing.
Did we change that to five o'clock because we, having a public hearing? Or did we just?
There's always a public hearing at that time.
Is it at that one, or is it the one later on in September?
Nope, it's this one.
That one?
August 31st. No, July 31st is the wheel tax. I wrote that one down.
Elsa is the only one we have left?
We should have had ice cream.
I went to McDonald's.
I just saw this on this paper, homemade ice cream. It's good.
So.
Enough to tell during the day? I don't know.
What are you doing August 9th, Amy? I'd like to challenge you.
Butler Day. Oh, Lord, no.
Come on. Come on. You're a public servant.
It's like that guy that ate all the hot dogs for Fourth of July. Wasn't it like eighty-some? Hot dogs and buns.
I want you to know that I did.
Lloyd Chestnut just won the thing for what?
Yeah, and the next guy was like forty-eight or something.
And if you throw up, you're disqualified.
He's a seventy, he's like a seventy-one jamming in seventy-two, and the commentator's like, he's, I know, he's going like, he has it in him, he's gonna be able to do it, he'll finish strong, you know? And I'm like, how do you call him?
And, you know, and they're, I don't think they're just eating the hot dog either. And, you know, and they're, I don't think they're just eating the hot dog either. There, that's a hot dog and the bun.
I have a break.
When it gets done, you watch and they soak them in water and shove them in because...
It goes down faster?
I want you to know that I won in 2015, DeKalb County Contest for their launch. Actually got accused of cheating because, well, because I was done so much quicker than the rest of the group. They're like, "You didn't eat..." They're looking under the table. So here's what they do. They offer you three things. They offer you water. I went on the night before. While I was doing that, I had the next one in the coffee. I put them in my mouth and they literally dissolved. Never chewed the whole box. I mean, it was like boom, 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 boom. Box gone and I'm looking around going...
Were they all the same kind of cookie? Or do you do different cookies? Was it a variety of cookies?
No, it was the sugar cookies.
Oh, the short one?
You just got to pray that, you know, you got somebody in the room that knows the Heimlich maneuver. I mean, because one's going to get stuck down there at some point.
So have we decided what we're doing with the July 31st meeting? Have we decided where?
Well, are you going to tap base or do something in the hallway, just in case? The old red room is the small room.
The white one holds 89.
The white, the white one's the larger room.
I just asked. That's the only reason I asked. Said, "Well, the fire code says 89."
Yeah. And years ago, I mean, long before we started moving things around, there used to be an auditorium in what is now the prosecutor's office. The doorway, the double doors right across from the assessor's office opened up into that auditorium. And it, it probably, if it held 50 people, I would, I'd be surprised. But it was a nice, there was a stage and everything was, it was tiered. So it was, it was set up rather nicely, but that's been gone for, I bet, I bet that's been gone since the 80s, maybe, late 80s. And that's the nice thing, you know, at the, in Steben County, they've taken the old high school and put a lot of county offices in that old high school. That has a beautiful auditorium in there that's huge. I mean, it's really nice. Get a lot of people in and we just don't have that. You know, I, I should remember, all my kids went to school there. I don't know, my wife would probably remember. I don't remember them having a, did, did they have a theater type room?
I was the last eighth grade class.
Were you? My, well, it was an elementary school and my kids all went there, but... You know, they might not have done that to you if you'd grown another couple inches, you know?
Stay under the radar.
For like a year, because then they realized that that was not a good idea. Ninth graders know more than seventh and eighth.
Good afternoon. So Alicia Rogers with the Extension Office. Pretty straightforward on the budget. Did as you've asked, kind of straightlined everything except Purdue has asked again for a 3% increase in our contractual services. But an overall increase in our budget is only 1.6% with that 3% increase, so. And that ended up totaling, I think it was less than $4,000 over last year, so. That's pretty much the, the long and the short of it for our budget ask. I know. I know. But yeah, yep. Nope. So I was just looking at numbers over the last few years, kind of what we've asked on budget-wise versus what we've kind of, I guess, returned to the county at the end of the year. So from 2022 to 2024, we did have two open positions in our office to help bring back some money. But from 2022, 2023, and 2024 budgets, we did have over $76,000 from our budget line items that did, I guess, get returned or not utilized. And so that was, what was it? An average of about 3.7% of our budget was turned back over the last three budget years. So just looking at those numbers and just wanted to bring this up. No. So if, so we've not had an open position... Five years now? So we've not had any open positions. So all of the county budget goes back to the county. None of, none of the funds that we asked for you besides our contractual agreement goes to Purdue. It all stays in county, so, yep.
Probably a lot of people don't have interaction with the department simply because of what they do. I mean, if you're involved in 4H, if you're involved in farming, you're involved in those things, of course you do. But they have been assisting with the Homeland Security developing our emergency response plan for DeKalb County. And you've seen just recently a number of cases why we need, each, each area needs to have emergency response plans and be prepared. And Alyssa and the department are doing a great job with that.
Thank you.
They're interacting with a lot more of us than we has in the past. Isn't that a good way to say it?
Yeah, kind of, kind of in the background, but still helping across the community. So, yes, yep.
You didn't come prepared to answer this, so you weren't prepared to. I mean, kind of where we, where we stand now, where do we see the next big push with the extensions? Is there something, some things, I mean, I know you go to conferences, you're, you know, they're always talking out ahead and all that. Is, is there something that, that's, you know, it's, agribusiness, agriculture is always an ever-changing scene. So what's the next big push that you see out there, if any?
If I had a magic eight ball, I could tell you. So obviously, technology is really changing, really, that's the biggest thing in all of our areas, really. Looking at health and human science side of things, so looking at the finances, mental health especially. They are huge on the health and human science side. 4H is always huge with keeping up to date with STEM technologies. So training our future workforce through a bunch of different workforce development. Obviously, 4H teaches a lot of great skills as well. And then on the agriculture side of thing, we're definitely seeing a lot in terms of technology, how that's changed in even the last 20 years, 16 years since I started. So really, it's just trying to stay with the times. Trying to get ahead of the times right now is a bit of a struggle because honestly, extension was kind of behind for a bit. So it's trying to get caught up and then seeing, like you said, kind of where that next step is going to lead us, so. Yeah.
I watched it on vacation last week and I was late night watching TV or whatever, one of the news things. And, and as a guy was talking about his farming operation and all that, and I thought, my goodness. I mean, before you just had to work hard.
Yeah.
That's what made you a successful farmer. You got to be very, very educated, way beyond...
Yeah.
Growing seeds in the ground and...
Yeah, yeah.
That type of stuff. It's just, it's advanced so much. I didn't know how that translated to our, our youth and...
Yeah. I mean, there's certainly a lot of opportunity there that we're doing trainings on. I know this year Purdue had a day-long workshop, I guess you could say, at their Purdue Ag Center there on campus for youth to come and experience some of those technologies, to go out and learn how to scout fields and things like that. For, again, helping to develop that workforce, so, yep. All right. Thank you. Yep. Have a good afternoon.
Well, just for that meeting on the 31st, we need to get some documentation around showing the different amounts and the different license types and that. Somebody, who's going to be doing that?
I told him two weeks I'll start working on it.
We can get it done and get it out to the rest of the council people before that meeting. We don't want to be reading it that night, so, for the first time.
Make a motion. We adjourn.